My name is Minia McGee, president and chair of Jackson County Executive Board Committee. We are happy to have you here today to help share your priorities and thoughts on the year's code 2020 budget. As a reminder, this is a budget that was designed, originated from the executive side, sent to us for review and possible changes. And it is through that process that we're hosting these open forums to understand what the priorities of the committee are and to create greater transparency and understanding of what's actually in the budget now. In terms of the process, we had until Tuesday to submit a progress amendment and have the budget passed by state statute. We have submitted such an intervention to county executive. So we will continue on with this process. The majority of us of the chairs are right now, just elected three, four weeks ago now, and are into this process, but believe that together, in collaboration with our colleague, legislator, right here, and our other colleagues who are returning back to the legislature, we can find how a good budget is transparent and transformed at the same time. So in terms of the process of today, we ask you to leave your conference room in five minutes to give us as much information as we possibly can about who you are, what you represent, what organization, if you have proposals, changes to the budget, how much your proposal is for, what program, what outcomes, and if it just so happens to bruise the budget, maybe what volume you really need to tell us in addition to the upfront. So I'll pause if they all leave before we go. We'll ask a list here for folks to sign up. You will not take your rest until you're ready for the floor. We'll let us sign up. But Nancy in the back, if you're interested in speaking, she will pass her name on to us up here in the picture for you to handle management. We will go if we have any questions, but we have to hand over at least two or three questions at this point. So without further ado, I'm going to pass over to our chair, legislator, Ron McGee, to give us a few words before we start.
First, I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. This is our last meeting, and we've been in a final, flexible budget of Monday and have gone up the air to execute this to people. So this is the third meeting that we want to be signing, once out of Kansas City, this is on the last one. So we will have a great opportunity on Saturday morning, and I just like that you are here. Before we get started, I really wanted to thank you to my members, their experiences, those who take care of the county, the representative, and start by the legislature in the front row.
Charlie, I'm currently district manager, chief of policy, and I'm just a little new to the trade in Minnesota.
Minia McGee, I'm the first district in district which is mostly west of Truce until about Banister Road, then it's west of Homewoodstown, to just a little part city of the state line. I come up and over, Kirk County, out of town, a little portion of northeast and all of the east and west of Columbus. I'm going to have to get out of this microphone.
I'm Vanessa Hussey, right here, who are in my district that I represent. I'm from Truce, Golden Road, and the district is Thursday traffic. We're really hot.
Good morning. My name is Tom LaPantone. I am legislator for second district at large, which means that I'm in the second district and I work with all of Jackson County residents.
And we may have other voices to throw us along the way, if there's a connection as such, but for now, while it gets started, we have five minutes. Give us as much to kill as possible. Please start with Mr. Michael, what do you draw?
All right. I'm guessing Elizabeth Nader. Okay. Mr. Carlos, go ahead. All right. Ms. Kim Ray, yes, please.
Okay. Good morning, legislators, thank you for coming to the conference. As you know, I had a hard election for Congress and he's standing to accomplish, which is the border that he blocked. Okay. It's part of your life. It's part of your life. So, okay, we're in the next year, it's going to change the border, which is the border in New York, to purchase a building to create the first ever United States, a joint minority championship development system. And it is bringing our strengths together and our resources together to begin helping small businesses with workforce development and home development. And so with that, we are now at the beginning stages, and for me, I need staff. I need staff in order for us to gear up and get ready. This year, our is going to accommodate for our building and for us to put the building together, but we need to make sure we don't just get the building, but we get the resources and we have funding for the programs. So I have two folks to our ask. Our ask is now first for staff. I need a chief of staff, and I have here the job descriptions for the tasks that I'm going to ask for. One, chief of staff and executive assistant, as well as we asking for an engagement coordinator. And our engagement coordinator will be looking on to make sure that funding is continued. But this is actually my own funding now. I need to hire a chief of staff, and I need to hire executive assistant, and I need to hire an engagement person. That is, in that amount, we need 150,000. And then together, Carlos and I, we're going to be the program, so we're going to get workforce development and small business development. And in order to do that, we're going to have to also have staff that wants to get everything set in. But we're also going to be to have money so that we can pay our resources. We're going to reach out and use ESOs to do some of the development, as well as the other program that we're running. We definitely want to make sure Kansas City right now is the place to be. And we are fast in economy, a meta for entrepreneurship and growth. And so we don't want to fail the first ever that's going to get national attention when you're the champion to develop a tenure and it failed before it started. So we're asking as a joint ask, Carlos and I, 250,000 to support the minority program. And I have some expectations, we're going to go down, down later. I think I have to, I think I have a question for you, I think I have a question for you.
Can you repeat your name, your position?
My name is Kim Ray, and my position is partner, lauching accomplice.
Thank you, Kim. A couple other notes that I forgot to mention. We will have very specific. What I'm trying to do is put this, because it comes. Because we are non-basically, we can have like, so we can have talk agenda, we can have a report, we can hear you and ask those sort of questions. So to ask something, we will, I will respond to you, or answer. We do have some catch after the room as well. We have surveys, we have, we have lots of statistics, we have all sorts of here, we have all the chairs that can see, we have tests, we may be able to ask very few questions after being out, and then we'll approach them back. So some of these things would be very, that's happening from us. But without other, I think I will pass over to my colleague, Ron McGee, and where is he?
Good afternoon, everyone. I apologize if I'm in time. I'm making a long shift on the road to the deadline, so we seem to be a little late.
Thank you. Carlos, go ahead.
Thank you, legislators. I was going to talk, because, most of the work for, most of it's my name. Carlos, who is president of the National Congress for Kansas City, which is starting in 46 years, working for the national, for national, which is our office. We're here also as a 20, asking for a championship, or maybe it will be the leadership to have a lot of sustainability, house to cover, and that's security as well, also giving young communities, go for membership, to get to know each other, this is how much we can afford. We are asking in addition to the quarter, whether it's a project, or running, or growing, when we do get a building out in the morning, we are also asking for 150,000 for staffing, for increasing staffing of our organization. That would include the small business development, or any of the chief of staff, and a part-time receptionist. The demands of small business, minorities of small businesses continue to grow during COVID, minorities were laid off, so they didn't have choice to operate in the business. And that's why we're in both him and mine's office as brave leaders. We look forward to, we need to help small businesses grow, and I would say, normally I don't have a small business at the corner, but they live here, we don't have a, we need small businesses to help them and start to grow. And if anyone has any questions, I will answer.
Thank you, Carlos. Mrs. McGee. I'm turning in, the job descriptions, I will email those to you if that's okay.
Okay. Are you going to? We are the, are the state, our, for the state of Oklahoma, for the state of Kansas City. Our, we do serve the state of Montana, for the journey of our businesses done in Jackson County. Our goal is to, you know, change lives for the world. In order to do so, there is a, is a disparity of ownership amongst the people, or community, or not being black residents. Over the past year, this one incident, I have individually or personally invested, and we have properties and utilities to help curb the need for the work of housing. But in order to receive this, we're asking for 3 million dollars for our paint initiative. That will allow us to acquire at least 16 official properties. We have them, and then have them available for our fire department. They cannot mortgage ready at the time. As you know, many of our clients that come into our office and want to purchase homes, they are obviously into closing table, if we do get them on the property, for various reasons, credit issues, lack of funds, and things like that. However, we want to be a whole resource, and we want not to be able to turn all the people white just because they're on the treadmill. So our paint initiative, which will allow us to acquire, and we have at least 16 properties, and have this, have these properties, this inventory available for those clients that can't get one at the time, and we're going to put them on a 24-month plan to be able to do these purchases of these properties, as well as prepare them to group education, financial education, home organization, and things like that, in order to get them ready. So this paint initiative serves three purposes, education, destination, and restoration. Just real quick, we just had a recent client that we thought were, you know, they got, originally they got a great group, got on their contract, two days, like, two weeks of closing, their finances were denied. This person had already put in his notice for landlord, and didn't have any vertico. So we want to be able to have, to say, you know, we know that you can purchase within a month, if you follow these steps, so they're just going out, you know, in the street. Another situation is he had a veteran that recently sold his property. However, what he didn't realize is that, you know, there were steps for him to purchase another home. So now, unfortunately, he sold his house, he has money to go towards the next purchase, he just doesn't have credit for it. So unfortunately, he's living in a old cell, so we want to be able to help those guys. There is a few others that are on the list that are going to support our initiative, and tell you a little bit more about it. But again, the 3 million dollars will be 2 million will go towards the inventory for the 16 properties, allocating 125,000 per house, and that includes acquiring, rehabbing, property management, so, and then the other million dollars will go towards the education purposes, which you can hear a little bit. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Ms. McGee.
As Shana spoke, I'm Sharon McGee, and I'm with Morrell Holmes as well. And as she spoke about our Paint the Picture initiative, I'm up here to talk about the 21, 24-month program. It will have benchmarks. As she stated, that part of a homeowner, or a person's barriers to buying homeownership is credit, down payment, and lack of education. And so what Morrell Holmes would like to do is, we want to put together benchmarks for a renter, so that we can educate them from start to finish and get them to the closing table within 24 months. Part of that includes a homebuyer education class. During that class, we're talking to them about what all that entails in buying a home, buying a home. We want to talk to them about credit building or credit repair. What we found is that a lot of, a lot of people who are interested in buying a home, especially persons of color, either they have no credit, bad credit, or they're just, they, they're not educated on how, what their credit portfolio should look like and what it should be. And so we have people in place and vendors in place that would be able to be a part of that education process. On the homebuyer education class, we want to also talk to them about maintaining a home. A lot of times, as a renter, the landlord is responsible for maintaining the home, and so as a renter, you're not educated on taking care of a home, you're just there and you're living. And so part of our homebuying class is going to be talking about maintaining that home, whether it's the exterior, the interior, having funds set aside so that if something breaks down, we're there to help you and guide you along the way. The other part of that is going to be a down payment, down payment assistance, so that we can show you how to start saving, and we want to allot money and have it readily available, so that when you complete that 24-month, we're going to have up to 2,500 dollars available to add to your portion. They're going to have skin in the game, but we want to make sure that we have money available. My colleague, Keisha, is going to come up, and I don't know who's next, I'm sorry, but we, we have two more people that are going to continue to talk about our Paint the Picture initiative. Thank you.
So there's Brian, Morrell, Keisha, Kennedy, and Terrell Jolly, they're all part of the, okay, so interchangeably.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Keisha Kennedy. I am a part of Morrell Homes Leadership Group, and I want to come here and talk about the Paint the Picture initiative as well. I kind of want to piggyback off of what Mrs. McGee was talking about as far as the 24-month benchmarks that we are going to put into place for these Jackson County residents. So we're going to talk, get to them about financial education, which would include budgeting, debt-to-income, wheels, trust, estate planning, things like that. And like she said, protecting your investment workshops, renting versus owning benefits and expenses associated, and that can be avoided with proper upkeep. So we want to do workshops about that as well, just to educate. And we're going to also, like Sharon said, have reserve funds to help when they are ready, after these 24 months of living in one of our rehab homes, to purchase and have a down payment. So that will help with that as well. Basically, as a lifelong Jackson County resident, I've noticed the education gap when it comes to the things that I just covered and that we're covering today. It is important to us and Morrell Holmes, and for the Paint the Picture initiative, to establish not only homes for our Jackson County residents, but the education on how to maintain those homes, build equity in those homes, and have a place to raise families while in an affordable and safe community. That's it. Thank you.
I'm Brian Morrell, and I'm also representing the Paint the Picture Initiative also. I wanted to speak on the mental health part of it. I've been rehabbing for five years, working with Vineyard Neighborhood Association. Ike Graham, they had allowed me to participate in rehabbing the abandoned houses, so I get most of my homes through the Abandoned House Act. And I was speaking with him last week on the mental effect that it have on the neighborhood, and I went back to where we was young. If we see a old home or something like that, and it's a group of us, and we throwing rocks at it, we busting out the windows, as, you know, as far as kids not having anything to do. But once we seen Mr. Frazier working on a home, and that home slowly gets developed, we kind of found something else to do as far as vandalizing, you know. So as time went on, and as today, it's like I'm turning into Mr. Frazier in a way. So most of these kids, when they roll through and they see me working on a home, it's most of my, most of my friends' kids also, you know, that's probably not around. So they tend to ask me, can they help do clean outs, you know, and, and that's, so I, I know that I'm putting myself in a position where I can be an example for the neighborhood to, you know, to try and make a, just bring something different for the youth to do. I want, and, and, I'm trying to lose, for what, get to my point. Through Vineyard Neighborhood Association, every home that they allow me to rehab, I also donate money back to them. That money that I donates back, it helped them with dumpsters, it helps them with cameras, you know, to try to stop some of the dumping that goes on in the neighborhood. Next month, the city manager is actually coming to speak with us about this thing we're trying to come up with called Find Them. And finding is coming up with putting more cameras in the neighborhood to find whoever's dumping, and they want to come up with a, like a Facebook page or something like that to actually, whoever's dumping, they have posted. So it's called Find Them in both ways. Find them as far as find them and make them pay a fine, and find out who's, you know, making the neighborhood look like that. And we also spoke with them about Paint, Paint the Picture Initiative, which we will help most of the elderly in the neighborhood who's not able, you know, to rehab their homes on the outside. You know, if they have broken or boarded our windows, we can step in, replace the windows, paint the homes, and also get the neighborhood involved in it. So, thank you.
Before we move to the next, I did want to raise a hand for who's presenting judge, who a lot of us are all can stand in the audience, who she's the first, after we're presenting judge. Yes.
How you guys doing? I know y'all sick of seeing me. That better? Okay, yeah, I represent community partners, a lot of, a lot of small businesses around the local area. I just want to really stress what we stressed last time, which was small businesses need funding. Yes, I'm in support of the 15.5 million dollar allocation to small businesses that Ezzy proposed. And I just want to stress, like, the importance of small businesses again. Just pulling some more stats, I was looking at some very interesting stats. What a lot of people don't know about me is I'm also an economist as well, as a researcher. So one of the things that really caught my eye was the impact, like, the indirect impact of small businesses. So when, when there's a small business that's injected into the community, what happens is other, other expenses that we don't realize are leakages from the community. So economically, when you spend money outside the community, that's a leakage in the community, but small businesses actually indirectly impact our community over 10 times over again. So when the money trickles, it circulates on, on average, about 10 different times due to small businesses. So what that does is that helps provide sustainability for our, our local economies when you're talking about infrastructure, you're talking about housing, you're talking about mental health, you're talking about all those things. It creates deep, deep roots, and that's what those roots are, what causes communities to be competitive in an international and national marketplace. So you look at innovation, innovation, small businesses are responsible for about 80% of the innovation in communities. There's an economist named Jaden Jacobs who's talking about, who talks about, oh, new work, new innovation. New innovation comes from small businesses that had old innovation and had old, old businesses that turned into new businesses. So, so when you look at the whole spread of economic growth, small businesses are the leading agent that, that provides that. So I just want to reiterate that to you all today, and really advise you guys to really strongly consider that proposal from Ezzy with that 15.5 million. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This is Mark Hueda Taylor.
Thank you so much for an opportunity to speak. Mark Hueda Taylor, and I'm here on behalf of the former Home of Statute Page and for the Santa Fe Area Council Neighborhood. As you all probably know, the former Home of Statute Page is a tremendous, in my mind, monument to the city, to the county, and to the state. We are in the process of rehabbing that house that was torched. As you all know, it was torched about three, four years ago. When that happened, we had already started our negotiations, our conversations with the National Trust of Historic Treasures. They came in and supplied us with 250,000 dollars to certainly save the, the building, save the home of our, one of our great historians, or great people of our, of our community, Statute Page. We were also blessed to receive funding from the state. Senator Washington, 500,000 dollars to help us work on that project, build that house back to the greatness that it is, so that we can use the facility, use the house for the community, for the entire, for all of Kansas City, for the state. It will be a tremendous museum on the inside for the community. It will also have some additional outbuildings on the side for events. There will be space projected for small businesses inside of the house, so it will be something that will be utilized by all. We're really excited about this, where we are now. We seek additional funding to, to bring the building, the house, and the outbuildings to fruition. and the outbuildings to fruition. We estimate that this is somewhere around a four-point-five million dollar project, right in the heart of dear old little Santa Fe. And as you know, Santa Fe is on the National Register of Historic Places. It is an important, strong neighborhood with strong community, strong neighbors, beautiful homes. And it's on the register for two reasons. One, certainly because it was the first planned neighborhood that African-Americans could move into once the rule was removed that prevented integration. It was the first planned neighborhood. There are a number of people who moved into Santa Fe at that time. I will tell you, Walt Disney previously lived in Santa Fe. Satchel Page, Buck O'Neill, the Hartsfield family. There are a tremendous amount of people who have lived and they still live in Santa Fe because of the richness of that community. So I'm seeking some support from Jackson County for, to help us bring that museum to life. We have had several conversations with the county already about it. But I really would be happy to give you any information that you'd like to see about that project. I really hope it's something that you will continue to consider because it'll be a value add to all of us, the county, the city, the state, and the federal government to have that monument, that museum, to one of the greatest baseball players of all time who lived right here in Kansas City. So thank you.
Kansas Taylor, you can submit additional documentation as well. For anyone else who are unable to submit additional documentation about your projects, you can see your background or names in the document. Make sure you got your full identification and submit the file. Mr. Kenneth Yancy.
Okay. Okay, my name is Kenneth Yancy. I want to thank you for your service, first of all. And I'm here representing essential families. Currently, Essential Families has an essential broadband pilot underway between Ninth and Prospect to Gregory and Prospect, east of Indiana, west of Pecil. We have received funding from the Kaufman Foundation, Health Forward, and the Schumacher Family Foundation to bring sixty-nine families into our program. What our program is designed to do is to eliminate, to eradicate, this broadband equity. How we do that is we make sure that all of our families get computers. They get computers, and we give them access to mental telehealth. We found out during our assessment, during our trial, that they're needing three things. They're needing, or they want to work from home, they're needing mental telehealth, and they're needing parental education. We have the data that shows they don't really quite know how to be parents. And if you look at all the demographics and all the crime and all that, our belief at Essential Families is everything starts at home. So we're seeking additional five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars to satisfy our waiting list. We committed to our present funders that we would hit sixty-nine. Within thirty-seven days, we were at seventy-three. So we basically hit our goal at a hundred and five percent. So Kaufman is writing us a support letter. A state representative, Michael Johnson, the whole council group. I should say the whole. We're still working on a few council members, but the city of Kansas City is very interested in establishing an MOU with Essential Families because of the results that we're seeing. So everything that I have, I will definitely submit to your person here. Everything we do is data-driven, and we have a solution for that digital divide everybody's talking about. A lot of folks are chasing that broadband money. We have a solution that will bring our families, again, Ninth Prospect, all the way to Gregory, east of Indiana, west of Pecil. There's nineteen thousand people in that stretch of land. We just found out fifteen thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-seven, no computers, no internet. I won't talk about their kids. We have the data about their kids. They're telling us these things. They're saying, "Help us." We have the solution, but we need your help. Again, we're requesting additional five-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand to satisfy our current waiting list of seventy-three, and we want to build some capacity. We have our building under construction at Twenty-four-O-Nine Prospect. Come on over and see it, and I hope to get you all support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Ford.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Ford. I am the founder and director of the Descended Freedmen Alliance of Kansas City. Descended Freedmen Alliance is an organization that's putting together, that's put together to make awareness and education about people that have African-American and Native American heritage. And so there's a great community of us here in Kansas City. And we're planning on having an event this August, Eighteen-Sixty-Six Treaty Signing Celebration. And before the pandemic, our organization used to celebrate this and observe it every year. And so we're looking to revitalize it. And so we're looking for some help in putting this celebration together. You can go to our website, dfakc.com, and find out more about the organization, the Eighteen-Sixty-Six Treaty, and all the history. I won't try and go into all that now because it's kind of intertwined. But in nineteen-oh-seven, when Oklahoma became a state, Jim Crow also moved in, and a lot of the black residents got out of there. They either started a section of cities where they could combine their economics and welfare together, hence came the Black Wall Street area, or they started one of those all-black towns in Oklahoma, or they moved out of Oklahoma. And Kansas City was a major destination point for a lot of them. Some of our most famous and notable people is Sarah Richter, who moved to Kansas City. She had oil on her allotment land. She built the mansion on Twelfth and Garfield. Jay McShan, Clyde Federal Williams. These are all people that came from Kansas City, I mean, from Oklahoma to Kansas City. I dare say that there's probably a number of you here that have Indian in your history. Let me see how many have Indian in your history and don't know how to research it. Well, that's what our organization does. But this year, we're trying to revitalize it. We're going to bring a lot of people from across the country into Kansas City, have a big celebration. One of the ladies who's a prolific writer and blogger, she's calling it the season of freedom because of Juneteenth in June, July, has the Fourth of July, of course. And then the Eighteen-Sixty-Six Treaty was signed in August. And so we're looking for probably somewhere between fifteen to twenty thousand dollars that we can utilize to, for promotion, for marketing, and to bring some of the writers, some of the speakers, and some of the entertainment into Kansas City. And so that's the... That's the... My family moved to Kansas City from Oklahoma. My family, my grandfather and grandmother sold their allotment land, moved to Kansas City. But nobody talks about the history. And so that's what we're trying to do. You probably experienced, you know about it, you heard, you got in it, but we don't know how, you know, know how to research it and how to go about it. Contact us at dfakc.com. We call it the facts because that's what we're trying to do, find the facts. And so dfakc.com. And we'd like for you to just get on your radar. I have much more than enough information to furnish you on our history of the company, of the organization, and of the history. And so thank you very much for this opportunity. I love what you're doing, reaching out to the public, and God bless you.
Thank you. For Saj Kaya.
Good afternoon, and thank you for saying my name right. You know, it's only like Saj Kaya. Most people say, "I can't say that," before they even try. I say, "Gaga, goo goo, Saj Kaya." Yeah, I'm Saj Kaya, Ambassador of the United Trade Council. We started out as the Reginald Gibson Memorial Foundation, which was my husband. And it was set up in remembrance of him. And our goal, which was to help as many people... Our mission was to assist the educationally and economically disadvantaged to have a better quality of life. And our primary site was on entrepreneurship because I felt that everyone has an innate ability that you can tap into to create either a product or a service from. And I wanted, and I went about teaching and consulting with people on entrepreneurship, which led to people setting up small businesses. I feel that that is the core. That's, it's essential that we really support the entrepreneurs and small businesses. When you look up and down our streets, you see small businesses everywhere, all up and down, every street you go to almost. You know, and that's where you start at. You start at small businesses. And this is what causes our community to thrive when people feel like they have a part of ownership in their community and they can share with other small business owners as well. And it causes a beautiful cultural oasis as well. We see that everywhere, and this is what causes our community to thrive. So I'm here in support of Ezzy's project and that we really, really see just how important our small businesses is because you can look at corporate, corporate here, corporate there, but that doesn't sustain the communities. The people that build in the communities sustain the communities. So I really just wanted to say that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. As a reminder, if you are interested in speaking, this is your last call. Angie, in the back, take your permission to get over to us. Without further delay, this is Charlie.
Good afternoon. Chairman Arbaca, members... Members of the Budget Committee. My name is Charles Delona. I am representing the West Side. And I am chairman of the West Side Central Neighborhood Association. Primarily, in October, we have been working all summer long to restore the Southwest Boulevard Fountain to get the Tonya Gary Center up and running with the swimming pool and also with the gym problems that it was having, the floor. In addition to that, a pool that we've had over there for more than sixteen years, it's more of a waiting pool for kids. We want to get that restored, up and running. And we worked on that for several weeks, a few months, and we got the endorsement, and we got the backing of the Kansas City, Missouri City Council by resolution. And the resolution mostly, the intent of it is to find funds for that and get these projects up and running. That's what we're, that's what we wanted to do. In the meantime, once we got that going, we also were involved in the Question One, Question Two efforts by the city. We backed them up. And during that campaign, we were pretty much promised that once this thing get going, we'll have at least enough money to get the pool reopened. And we don't know about everything that you're asking, but at least the pool, we can get the pool reopened and up and running for the kids. A public pool, not a neighborhood pool, but a public, citywide facility. In other words, we have kids that use it across the West Side, and we also have kids that come and use it from the adjacent neighborhoods to the West Side. That's the pattern that that's been for years. I went and swam in that pool back in the fifties, believe it or not. So in the meantime, we approached Frank White, and we believe we secured a commitment from him to bring a lump sum of money from the county to the West Side to help with all three projects, to restore all three projects. And we know that that wasn't on Frank White's own word, but it had to be passed by the legislature. We're aware of that. But I'm here today because I'm concerned. You're going to pass a budget, I think it's Monday, and I don't think it's stated anywhere in the budget as the amount of money that would be coming to our neighborhood, our West Side projects. I don't even think it's stated period in there. And that's why I'm here. If it needs to be amended, you know, whatever needs to be done, we need those funds to continue the project. As I speak, the fountain project, we're thinking, we're thinking of expanding it. That would include a lot and a museum right behind the fountain so that we can combine it and make it a Welcome to the West Side Plaza Fountain. And right next to it, a museum of Chicano heritage, Chicano history, not only here in the Kansas City area, but in the whole Midwest region area. So these are ideas high in the sky, and we would like for you to help us with that. Thank you very much, and I'm going to stick around. If any of you need any more information from me, I'll be here. I'm back there, I'm already talking to Troy back there in the back. I sat right next to him, so thanks. Any questions?
What was the number suggested?
One million dollars.
Just for those who are interested, there's a budget book up here. Charlie, you want to find the numbers there? I'll just look for it. Others is here, what we're doing. There's posted online, I don't know if it's all, please go to, Angie.
And we have a QR code that they can scan and do a project.
Angie's amazing. There's a QR code that they can scan and do a project as well. Take a look at the link from the website. So before we close, I will put it to my colleague, Angie, to be the special guest.
We've got a version of the cameras that we're announcing in minutes to join us. We also have our own managers standing up for our legislative.
All right. Thank you so much for all your commitment to coming out and being a part of this transparent process. Again, we will continue to... Oh, Ms. Finley?
Yes.
Excuse me, excuse me. I wanted to listen and get an idea of the format. I haven't had a chance to listen to the hour meetings, but since you're doing this this way, I wanted to mention a few things. Number one is the Harvest's Food Program. I worked on last year for a million dollars. Now, it isn't perfect. It has some issues with fresh food, and I'd like for you to look at that again. Number two is the Samuel Rogers and Smoke Parkway Health Center. Now, he allocated last year, I think he told him, three billion dollars. He goes to the health centers. And they have a certain important name. Number three, there are them, and I'm sure you've heard of some of these things, but I wanted to mention it. Number three, there are, and I'm sure you're aware of some of these things, but I wanted to mention it. You've got the outside agency fund, okay? And that fund funds your nonprofit agencies that do homeless, that do help to better women, and do various things. There's about twenty-five of them. And you've got somewhere in the vicinity of three million plus in that fund. And generally, the minimum is three million. We have been able to put more in for agencies, like Palestine Senior Citizen Center and some other that is administrative funding to help them operate. That is a unique situation because a lot of those social services agencies are not owned by the city of Kansas City, Missouri. So the county has a primary responsibility for a lot of those social services. And that's something I was always pretty proud of. The next thing I wanted to mention is the combat tax, which I'm sure you're aware of. That comes from the Combat Commission. It's a tax, it's dedicated, it's for law enforcement, it's for drug treatment, it's for various things in that area. You'll receive that, if you haven't received it, you'll receive a recommendation from the commission. And that must actually be a priority of mine. The next thing is the Health of the East Side, which we have funded in the past year, about ten million over the past few years. And that money is for the treatment for AIDS, not AIDS, AIDS, not the issue that was, but the treatment for COVID and testing and that kind of thing. It is mainly administered by the KC. Now, you need to watch that to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. And that goes for everybody. And finally, I want to mention the HRC Human Resources Commission, which is funded by a assessed amount on each deed, real estate transaction in Jackson County. Bishop Temple is a charter hitter, at least he was last time I heard of him. And they help the homeless. And they have about fifteen or sixteen agencies under a board that looks at all proposals for homeless people. And that comes directly from the deeds and the money's there. And it, it has been a little more money each year, it's three hundred and fifty or so, to about fifteen agencies that assist the homeless. And that is critically important as you see all these people on the street. I look forward to seeing what you all want to do. I look forward to offering as I have to some of you, to believe whatever help that you may feel that you might want to ask. If I can offer any thoughts, any suggestions, I'd be happy to. But it is in your hands now. And one, you've gathered good luck. And I hope that you'll find that it is rewarding to serve these people. As I thank you all for your willingness to serve.
All right, again, thank you for joining us today for this budget hearing process. As I have shared, other hearings, the twenty twenty-three budget hearing process, we hope to conclude in the next thirteen days. I think that's my estimate. But we fully plan to continue the process of budgeting all year long. Whereas we're, we're not obligated to just do this in thirty days in the future. So you can expect more hearings, more transparency opportunities, more engagement moments with us that we do outside of the downtown, in these courthouses to ensure that we're truly engaging the community. So unless our chairman has any final words, I think we are adjourned. Thank you so much for joining us today.